This is the Corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake, regular meeting of council via Zoom Tuesday, March 9th, 2021, 4:40 PM. We've called the order and we will have a moment of silence. Approval of the agenda?
Moved by Lad Shaba, seconded by Stacy White. Be it resolved that the agenda for the regular meeting of council held on March 9th, 2021, beginning at 4:40 PM be approved or circulated to all members of council.
All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Declarations of preliminary interest? None noted? Oh, I missed. Oh, no, I'm good. Petitions and delegations? None noted? Acceptance of minutes and recommendations?
Moved by Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Patrick Adams. Be it resolved that council approve the minutes of the following meetings? Minutes of the regular meeting of council held February 16th, 2021. Minutes of the special meeting of council held February 23rd, 2021. Minutes of the special meeting of council held March 2nd, 2021. And minutes of the special meeting of council held March 4th, 2021.
All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Item six, reports of municipal officers and communications. Will receive a verbal COVID update from Ms. Sakrider, Director of Community Services?
Thank you, Councilor Owen, through you to council. As Tamiskamine has moved into the orange category of the provincial framework, there are modifications we have implemented throughout the municipality. The key messaging in orange is to implement enforced measures and restrictions with enhanced enforcement. All facilities require visitors to screen prior to entering, use hand sanitizer, wear a tight-fitting mask that covers nose, mouth, and chin, and keep a minimum of two meters between individuals. Development Services and Public Works recommends that visitors phone in advance to book the time of their visit. At the community complex, reservations are required for all visits. Masks must be worn at all times except when actively participating. Three meters must be kept between individuals in the gym or fitness classes, and fitness class sizes are maxed at 10 participants. Skis and snowshoes still can be reserved, and Civic Park is open daily. The town of Kirkland Lake is working with the Tamiskamine Health Unit to roll out mass immunizations. In the very near future, immunizations for the priority groups of those 80-plus will begin at Heritage North. The Government of Ontario has committed financial support to the town of Kirkland Lake through the 2021 COVID-19 Recovery Funding for Municipalities Program to support operating costs. Kirkland Lake is receiving $39,828. To conclude, I'd like to thank the hard work of all of our custodial staff involved in disinfecting our facilities, our frontline staff in all of our facilities, our user groups for following the regulations, and all the residents for remaining vigilant. Although the recent outbreak has been disheartening, with the proper measures in place, we hope to return to the green category in the very near future. Thank you very much.
Councilors, any questions for Ms. Sakrider? Thanks for the report. And item 6.2, change in arena operations due to COVID-19 closures. Again, it's Ms. Sakrider?
Sorry, do you want to just do a motion?
Oh, sorry, I forgot the motion. I'm sorry.
Moved by Casey Owens, seconded by Lad Shaba. Be it resolved that the verbal COVID-19 update be received?
All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Now we can go to the arena operations.
Thank you, Councilor Owen, through you to council. This report has two different parts to it, but they both do relate to the operations in the arena. The first is in regards to the date that we take out the ice. So in 2018, we did receive a resolution from council that the ice season shall extend until, at the latest, the end of March. We have had a request from Kirkland Lake Minor Hockey to extend the ice season for the month of April for this year due to the fact that they weren't able to get on the ice as early in the season as well as for the month of January. There is definitely a cost to this. So if you look at the revenue and the expenditure, the energy consumption to hold ice is very expensive. So we've taken this from past energy bills as well as from looking at the actual hours that we have each day that are working at the plant, and then determining exactly how much it costs per hour at the plant. So there's definitely a cost that cannot be recognized or received through the rental rates. Minor Hockey is the only user group at this point that has come forth. However, we do think that we will have some other potential revenues with some of our old-timer groups. They've indicated they think they may continue on for their rec pickup hockey's, and we probably will have a few rentals. There is a net impact, however, financially. The second recommendation is in regards to storage room rental rates. So a number of our user groups in the facility rent space on an annual basis. So it's very much like if you rent space at a storage compartment area. You rent the space, it's based on square footage. What you do with it is basically up to you, and you have that ability to use it for the season, and we've allowed people to use it for the year as well. We do have big changes that we've seen this year. The user groups have not been able to use the facility near as much as they have in the past. And for the two groups that have dressing rooms, their dressing room use has definitely been limited. So staff are recommending a couple of different thoughts. Staff are recommending 20% reduction for all of the user groups, for all of the areas that they rent. So this could be for office space, this could be for storage space, it could be for their team's storage space, things like that. And then we're recommending for the two user groups that have dressing rooms that are specific for that group, a 50% reduction. Again, there is a financial impact. It would come to about $4,000 for this calendar year. Are there any questions on either of the recommendations?
Councilor Ivanoff?
Ms. Sakrider, there's no funding available through some COVID relief funding for these teams. Is there? Would there be something that we can apply for, they can apply for?
So there is COVID relief funding through the province that we've received the first round of funding for the 2020. And for 2021, we've received two impacts. So one was the one that I announced tonight, which has been previously announced, but I did talk about tonight, the $38,000, and I believe we received another $40,000 in January. I have not read of anything specific for user groups for them themselves to apply to.
Any other comments from council? Ms. Sakrider, I know our previous CAO was keeping track. At least he told me he was keeping track of all the additional costs that we incurred due to special circumstances with COVID, with the idea of putting into the government for reimbursement. And I assume that's what the $39,000 was? So if council was to agree tonight to these reductions for these groups, we would be able to include that? There'd be further funding coming in our COVID costs recoveries?
So did you ask, would we be able to include these costs if there was further funding coming?
Yes.
I believe so. So what we've seen from the province so far has indicated that the funding is for operating costs. So these specifically would be operating costs due to COVID. So either of these costs would be eligible to put against, for example, the $38,000 that was just received?
No.
I'm not sure if we will see additional dollars come from either the province or the feds with COVID relief.
Well, I'm being an optimist, and I'm hoping it will be coming. So we will need... Do you have a resolution?
Yep.
I'll ask her quick to read the resolution.
By, it's moved by Patrick Adams, seconded by Casey Owens. Be it resolved that report number CS-2021-002, entitled Changes in Arena Operations Due to COVID-19 Closures Be Received? That staff be directed to keep the ice in until the earlier of the end of the Kirkland Lake Minor Hockey Association's season, April 30th, 2021, or until required by Tamiskamine Health Unit for mass clinics to deliver the COVID-19 vaccine? And that staff be directed to reduce all storage room rates for user groups by 20%, as well as by 50% for those groups who rent dressing rooms for their clubs?
Yes, Ms. Sakrider?
Thank you, Councilor Owen, through you to council. I did forget to mention that in the resolution that was presented tonight, it does indicate the earlier of the two, either the end of the minor hockey season or at the time period when the Tamiskamine Health Unit would like use of the arena. Based on correspondence we've had over the weekend, it is less likely that they will use the arena and more likely that they will use Heritage North. So it is more likely that Minor Hockey would be able to, or any other user groups, use the ice until the end of April.
Okay, thank you for that update. I think we'll just leave it in the resolution in case some changes then were covered either way. But you could communicate that. I mean, I assure you already have probably communicated that to Minor Hockey, so... Okay, I'll call the vote. All in favor? Two, three, four, five. Opposed? Carried. Okay. Oh, okay. We're down to item 6.3, Kirkland Lake Drinking Water System 2020 Annual Summary Report. Michelle Riverley, Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Councilor Owen, through you to council. The requisite reports have been prepared in accordance to Regulation 170/OTR by the Ontario Clean Water Agency on behalf of the town. The reports are based on information maintained by Aqua. Two municipalities have been required to comply to Inter-Aerial Regulation 170 made under the Safe Drinking Water Act since June 2003. That came out of a Walkerton inquiry. So under Section 11 of the Regulation 170, requires the owner of the drinking water system to produce an annual report. The report must include the following: Description of this system and chemicals; Summary of adverse water quality reports; Action statement; Summary of all required testing; Also, description of any major expenses incurred to install, repair, and replacement of the equipment. The report basically says that Aqua water quality data collected in 2020 demonstrate that the quality of the water, of drinking water system in Kirkland Lake provides good quality water to the users. But it also notes that there was five adverse quality incidents, and they've been addressed accordingly and reported to the ministry based on the guidelines. The report indicates that the Kirkland Lake Drinking Water System was able to operate according to the terms and conditions of the permit to take water in accordance with the related capacity of the license while meeting the community demand for the water. It's been operating effectively. The report shows the capitals that we invested in the plant to maintain the plant. Is there any questions related to the report?
Councilor Shaba? You're on mute, Councilor Shaba.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I have two questions for you. The incidents that you refer to, that will be on page eight of 22, those were reported to the ministry. Were they equally reported to the council at that particular time? Or do you just wait till this summary to come before the council?
Basically, Aqua is responsible to report to the ministry, but don't always notify us if it's of minor nature. If there's an issue that comes up, then it would be brought forward to council.
Yeah, my reading of the regulations is that they have to report to the owner as well because we're equally liable in the scheme of things. So I'm not too sure. I mean, I will suggest that those incidents be brought to the council for information, and when corrective actions are taken, then they should be brought back to let us know and not wait till we get a summary down the road, if that's not the practice. Now, the other question that I have for you is that our source of water is Gull Lake, right?
Correct.
And I see that the amount of water that we draw out of that lake, I believe we utilize a fraction of that. But I'm sure you've been to Gull Lake as well. There is a railroad track running alongside that lake, I believe, on the south side of it. Now, my question to you is that, God forbid, if we had a derailment in that vicinity and spilled, what is the plan B for the town when it comes? Because we're drawing our water from that as the main source, but, you know, I hope it doesn't happen. But if it happens that there is a derailment, and somehow that water was fouled, so what is our plan B? Do we have a plan B?
There is a standby pump system next to the lake, but the system has not been in use for so many years. I don't know how well the plan B would be.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's it.
And, Councilor Shaba, just to verify something. That rail line actually runs through the lake? Depending what was spilled, it may stay on surface, and we're drawing from close to the bottom of the lake. So in many cases, we would be okay, we'd just have to monitor. But it is a concern that has been brought up in the past about the rail line going through there. Unfortunately, it's something we have to live with. The cost of putting in an alternative would be prohibitive at this point in time. So I think, you know, we could probably, and Michelle, you can correct me if I'm wrong, in an emergency, we could probably get the McTavish line up and running in relatively short time, I believe.
Yeah, that's correct. It's on standby at this point.
So we do have a backup plan. However, I wouldn't call it, and I'm hoping Michelle will agree with me. I wouldn't call it an ideal backup plan, but at least it keeps water running to Kirkland Lake. Okay. We have a resolution?
Moved by Stacy White, seconded by Lad Shaba. Be it resolved that memorandum number 2021-PW-003M, entitled Kirkland Lake Drinking Water System 2020 Annual Summary Report Be Received? That council for the Corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake hereby accepts the Kirkland Lake Drinking Water System 2020 Annual Summary Report as presented? And that staff be directed to upload the Kirkland Lake Water System 2020 Annual Summary Report to the town's website?
All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Okay, move on to item 6.4, Summary of Remuneration and Expenses. And Clerk Elliott will present on this one.
Thank you, Acting Mayor Owen, through you to council. Our treasurer, our past treasurer, Keith Gorman, had put this together before he left, and this is to fulfill a requirement that we have to report the summary for you today. So I don't know much on it, but I hope that this is okay for you. I apologize that the attachment was missed at the original posting of the agenda, but we have included that since, so you have the numbers with you today. And it is just to be received at this time.
Okay, we'll receive this. Any questions on the report? Yes, Councilor Shaba?
Thank you very much, Mr. Acting Mayor. I don't have a question about the remuneration, but I do have a question about the bylaw number 20-005 that was sent to us, particularly item number three. I'm not too sure what would trigger that number three item. What would trigger that? The way I see it, it was written that "Should members of the council absent themselves from regular meetings of council, the said allowance will be reduced by the sum of $50 for each such absence if council directs staff to do so by resolution." I'm not too sure because there, we don't, there are no numbers. But I'm just tabled this, I don't think it's... I'm asking you guys to change this bylaw, but I just, you know, I just don't know in my mind what can actually trigger that item number three, if anybody could be of assistance.
Okay. Okay, Clerk Elliott can answer that for you?
I think, Councilor Shaba, through that, it's open to leave it up to council's discretion. So if there is an absence and you wish to reduce the pay, then you're able to do so if the council resolution is passed as a whole.
And Councilor Adams, did you have something to add there?
No, I was just supposed to do the exact same thing. Since it's going to be a resolution, it would take council as a whole to direct staff to do so. So because it states a resolution, that takes all of council to debate and agree if that's what the motion needs to be moved.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Can I call for a vote on the resolution?
So we're going to just go with the motion to receive this report, but we also want to touch on another thing on the remuneration topic. But we'll just do the motion to receive, and then I'll let Acting Mayor Owen take it from there. So for this report, moved by Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Casey Owens. Be it resolved that memorandum number 2021-Corp-009M, entitled 2020 Summary of Remuneration and Expenses, elected officials be received?
All in favor? Opposed? Carried. As all the councils know, with perhaps the exception of Councilor Shaba, our first two years in council, as a council, we decided not to take any increase in our remuneration. We've been busy with many things this year, and that's kind of slipped through the cracks. And now payroll is wondering what they're supposed to be paying us because we didn't pass a resolution. So we are causing a problem. It's not just a procedural thing, it's also affecting staff. So since this was on the budget, or on the agenda tonight, I thought we could open it up for discussion, write a resolution, and pass it so that business can be carried on in the correct manner. Yes, Councilor Adams?
Yeah, I'm for keeping the pay the same as to what it was when we started. So keep the pay the same and keep moving forward.
Councilor White?
I agree with Councilor Adams. Financially, nothing's changed with the municipality, and we all agree to keep our wages low, to keep on track with our fiscal responsibility. So I vote to keep it at the 2018 level as always.
Thank you. As the last job I had, I was on a wage freeze for five years. I'm not sure I would know what to do if our pay increased. So I too am in favor of keeping our remuneration at the current rate. If there's no more comments, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Oh, hang on, we need to read the resolution first.
So, Councilor Adams, I have you as the mover, and Councilor White as the seconder. Is it appropriate to have it read as, "Be it resolved that staff be directed to keep the council remuneration at the same rate as 2018"? Or is there a different language you'd like?
Is that good with you, Councilor Adams? Okay, it's good with Councilor White. Okay, now I'll call the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Item 6.5, Off-Road Vehicle Bylaw. And again, Clerk Elliott has some background information to share with us on this one?
Thank you, Acting Mayor Owen. As my memo outlines, if you recall, at the February 2nd regular meeting of council, we had discussions about updating the currently titled All-Terrain Vehicle Bylaw to include more language to allow different classes of off-road vehicles. Conversations arose with that as well about the language that's in there about a portion of government road. So staff were directed to bring that to the Police Service Board, which we did at the February 10th meeting. And from Police Service Board, they recommended that staff be in contact with the OPP to connect with the MTO about legalities with that language. And we still are awaiting an official response on that. But right now, what MTO has noted is, in the regulations mapping, it actually doesn't show that portion that we're looking at. So in their previous experience, if it's not noted, they default to that you're not allowed. So he's going to confirm that. So my recommendation is to refer this matter to the next regular meeting, and hopefully we'll have more of a confirmed answer at that point. I have put together some draft language in a bylaw that outlines some of the other permitting other vehicles. So that's there for your review as well for next meeting as well.
Councilor, in favor of referring us to the next regular meeting?
So I can do, or is there any questions first? Moved by Lad Shaba, seconded by Patrick Adams. Be it resolved that memorandum number 2021-CLK-007M, entitled Off-Road Vehicle Bylaw Be Received? And that this matter be referred to the next regular meeting of council when an official answer from MTO through OPP is received for the use of a portion of government road?
All in favor? Opposed? As you can see, I'm really off my game tonight. I'm calling votes when I'm not supposed to, not calling them when I'm supposed to, but we'll get through it. Okay, item seven, consideration of notice of motion. Okay, Councilor Shaba, you got a motion to present tonight? You're on mute, sorry.
I'm not too sure how this is supposed to be presented, but what is there now captured the intent of what I want? And just a little bit of history about trails in Kirkland Lake. And I think it started from 1998, the so-called Trail 2000 Committee, Trails 2000, Healthy Communities, Trails Committee. And some of you guys may remember some of the committee members that started all this. Martha McSherry, Doc Cooper, Paul Filto, Clancy, Ross Walker, Brian Hamilton, Lydia Alexander, and George Elliott. So those are the committee members that got all this thing got started. And then all of a sudden, we ended up getting not all the trails, but some of them. And then, of course, the one over at the King Ross Pond. And King Ross Pond itself was made possible by a lot of volunteer efforts and a lot of funding agencies. If you ever go there, you see them right on the signboard that is there. So what I'm proposing tonight is the value added to the King Ross Pond, something similar to what they have in Gillis Lake in Timmins. And also, if you ever go to Ruwanuranda around the lake, you see the lighting. So I'm proposing that the staff be directed to investigate the lighting around the King Ross Pond trail. I'm particularly interested in them to investigate the availability of capital funding for such lighting. That's it.
Okay, counsel, you heard the motion. Do I have a second or on the motion? Eugene, are you seconding it? Okay.
I am, yeah.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure. Further discussion on the motion? Yes, Counselor Adams?
Yeah, just kind of looking for input from staff right now as to if they need any more clearer definition as to what's being requested by council. The past we've directed staff to investigate and has come back with reports saying they're not clear. So just before we direct staff, if there's any feedback from staff, if they want any clearer direction from this request, that would be appropriate now.
Does any staff member have an answer? Okay, Ms. Sackrider, please?
Thank you, Acting Marilyn, through you two counsel. My understanding is that you would be looking for costs associated with lighting at Kinross Park, as well as opportunities for provincial or federal funding to offset the cost.
That would be correct.
The question is, Ms. Sackrider, and you have great deal of experience in this area. Is there potential for any grant money that you're aware of? Because expense will be considerable.
There are a few. I would have to look to see exactly what the grant criteria is. There's a couple that I'm thinking of right now, and I'll certainly investigate further to see if they are open at this time. And if lighting at an outdoor space would fit criteria, it is possible that there may be some COVID resiliency funding that it may fit because it's outdoor recreation. I just would have to look clearly at the criteria.
And I have another question for you, Ms. Sackrider. With all your COVID requirements and everything, would you and your staff have time to conduct such research without causing undue pressure on the department?
Yes, we would, if I could, I would assume the timing you would be looking at would be at the time that we'd be bringing capital budget forth for twenty twenty one.
Yeah.
I would think it within the next month, by the, I would think, yes, we can do that within the next month.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we weren't at a pressure that staff, those councils can be guilty of that. Okay, any further questions, comments from council? Okay, and I'm glad Lad brought the motion because it clarified something for me. It's not a motion to do the work, it's only a motion to investigate. And then we can make the decision. So all those in favor? Posed, carried. Okay, Clerk Elliot, introduction and reading and consideration of bylaws.
Okay, we have two this evening. First one moved by Casey Owens, seconded by Stacy White. Be it resolved that the following bylaw be read a first, second, and third time, numbered, passed, signed by the mayor and the clerk, and the seal of the corporation be affixed there, too. Bylaw number twenty one dash zero one nine being a bylaw to appoint an interim CIO and execute employment agreement with John Stedholm for the interim CIO position.
Any comments or questions from counselors? All in favor? As unanimously.
Moved by Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Lad Shaba. Be it resolved that the following bylaw be read a first, second, and third time, numbered, passed, signed by the mayor and the clerk, and the seal of the corporation be affixed there, too. Bylaw number twenty one dash zero two zero being a bylaw to delegate administrative powers to the CIO.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? Posed, carried. For bylaws, okay, good. Where am I at now, sorry?
Number nine, questions?
I've lost my agenda. Questions from counselors?
Not noted.
Not noted?
Notice of motion?
Notice of motion? Okay, I'm back in. None noted? Counselors' reports? Yes, Counselor Owens?
Thank you. So I'm an avid skier. I love cross-country skiing, and I'm kind of sad or bummed out that I'm stuck indoors right now instead of enjoying this beautiful sunshine and being able to go on the ski trails. Kirkland Lake's lucky. We have the opportunity to cross-country ski for free. You can get them for free at the complex. You can get on the trails for free because it's all done through fundraising through bingos and volunteers. Volunteers are the ones that maintain these trails. They work extremely hard to get the trails up and running, to keep them groomed as best as they can, weather conditions permitting. And as a skier, and I'm sure as a volunteer, it's very frustrating when ignorant individuals, and I'm using my words wisely right now, because if I was outside on the trails, I'd be using a different kind of language, when ignorant individuals decide to use their snowmobiles and go on these trails and destroy them. It happened last week. Volunteers worked hard on Wednesday. Thursday night, one or two snowmobiles decided to go out and destroyed half the trail system. And it's disappointing. It's frustrating because then when you go out, you're expecting to be able to ski. You get to that, you have to turn around. Sometimes it's not as bad as what it was last weekend, and if you happen to catch one of these tracks off a skidoo with your ski, it can, it can cause a lot of damage. It can cause you to fall, hurt yourself. We've got a lot of people using the trails this year that are new to skiing. I would just ask cooperation from snowmobile operators, like, you can go wherever you want. Can you just stay off that little ten kilometers worth of trails that volunteers work really hard for? Thanks.
Thanks, Counselor Owens. Counselor Adams? You're on mute.
With the recent outbreak at Kirkland Lake Gold, and being a part of the team that's testing everyone, I just want to thank all members of the community, including Kirkland Lake itself, for the support in this matter with everybody coming together. The amount of community support from our merchants and helping and coming together, including the local fire department, has been absolutely fantastic. The corporation has tested over a thousand people within three days, and that's a benefit to our community overall. So thank you very much, everybody in the community, for coming together during this time to ensure that our community remains safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Adams. Any other counselor reports? Okay, I'll just follow up on Counselor Adams' report. It was very encouraging for me as a resident, having children and grandchildren in the community, to see how fast Kirkland Lake Gold responded to the outbreak, and to see the thoroughness, thoroughness of their response. It made me feel very confident that the company was doing everything that it could to keep the outbreak as small as possible, and that that's really reassuring to me. I don't worry about my own health too much, but I certainly do worry about my children, my grandchildren, and my hat goes off to Kirkland Lake Gold first for the way they dealt with the situation. Also, to follow up on Counselor Owens' comments about snowmobiles, I would like to remind snowmobilers that they are not to be on local streets that they are allowed on after eleven o'clock at night. On two occasions recently, I've been awoken after one AM in the morning with these high pitched motors, the sound carries very strongly. I happened to be at a residence house on Friday night two streets away from mine and right out of trailhead, and there were one snowmobile was definitely speeding and the other probably was. And when I stood on the side of the road, the one that helped may or may not have been speeding, he revved up his high-pitched motor just to annoy people. I want to remind snowmobilers that it is a privilege to be allowed to drive on Kirkland Lake streets. And if that privilege is abused, council can always go back in and change the bylaw, which would be sad. Because we were one of the first communities to allow snowmobiles on the streets. And I am a former snowmobiler myself, so I don't want to appear that I'm coming down on snowmobiles. I just want to remind them and ask them to please consider that those high-pitched motors especially, the sound carries very, very far. And that the speed limit is twenty kilometers in a fifty kilometer. There are young kids playing in snowbanks. You're not going to be able to stop in time if one comes sliding out, and no one wants to see that happen. And I know it's only a minority, a small minority, but I'd just like to put that out for people to consider. Thank you.
So we'll move by Stacy White, seconded by Casey Owens, be it resolved that the verbal updates from members of council be received.
All in favor? Carried. We have some additional information. The first one is the Integrity Commissioner Report on Pat Kylie, Mayor Pat Kylie, for consideration of suspension of remuneration. And before I put that to the floor for discussion, I just have a short statement that I would like to make. And this is more for the ratepayers of Kirkland Lake, so they have a full understanding of what really is happening here. There is no joy in this for any member of council. As Counselor Casey Owens stated a few meetings ago, as elected officials, we are held to a higher standard. Part of that standard is we must abide by council's code of conduct, which is provincially legislated. After an investigation by the Corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake's Integrity Commissioner, it was found that Mayor Pat Kylie had violated the code of conduct. It is now up to council to determine if a penalty should be applied and what that penalty should be if one is applied. This is not a public lynching, and this is not a public slogging. Council is merely following the Ontario Municipal Act, which sets out the rules that council must follow. I will now put the issue to the floor for discussion. Counselor Adams?
Yep, as I have stated before, I think that the Integrity Commissioner has done the report, has made some recommendations. I think we should follow the Integrity Commissioner's recommendations as they are stated in the report and get this thing over with. Thank you.
Okay, and just to clarify that, for those who haven't seen the report, the Integrity Commissioner recommended that Mayor Kylie apologize, which he did at a previous meeting, and that he be subject to a reprimand. Okay, just for those who haven't seen the report. And I'll add at this point that the Integrity Commissioner's report is similar to any report we get from staff or a committee of council. And it's those people who make the recommendations, and it's council who makes the decisions. So council is not obligated to follow the recommendations. And in some cases, council may have information that those reporting to council did not have. Yes, Patrick, Counselor Adams?
Yeah, so in an act of transparency, we have discussed how important that is and how meetings with an email are actually subject to open meeting rules. So on February twenty fourth, we did receive an email from the mayor, and it was later determined that that was supposed to be an open meeting, as it did have a motion discussion taking place that involved public interest. So I will not be going ahead with remuneration suspension. As within the email, it says, "I urge you to accept the IT recommendations," this is from the mayor, "as stated to avoid further action." So for the people of Kirkland Lake, I just want to put this thing to rest as this is just going to get dragged on as there's threats of further action being made. And also within it, because it is a public document now, is that there is a statement saying, "Why am I being treated differently than any other members of council who have been found guilty of violations under the code of conduct violations or conflict of interest?" So just as for clarification, the conflict of interest would probably be reiterating to me. In a report that was accepted by council, it was actually found that no conflict of interest happened. So that is a libel statement, just as a fact. So just to end everything now, there will be no remuneration, so that this thing can just be put to an end when there's threats being made like that, so that's where I stand.
Counselor Owens?
Yeah, I've been debating this one for a couple weeks now. It's kept me up at night a few times, and keep going back to what we were told when we first got on council in two thousand and eighteen, is that we have to do what's in the best interest of our community. We have to do what's in the best interest for the corporation of Donna Kirkland Lake. What's good right now, we need to put this behind us. We need to be able to move forward. We've got a very, very short window to work with. We've got an amazing person coming in trying to right the ship. We need to take advantage of that and not get bogged down in legal legal, whatever you want to call it. Right now, what we need the most is leadership. We can't have threats of being sued. We can't have threats of counselors are going to be sorry because of what, or, yeah, be sorry for what they say or however you want to say it. We can't have individuals going around local restaurants and saying that it's character assassination, like, on behalf of this council. That's not leadership. We need somebody in that chair's position that is going to lead us, that is going to put egos aside and just move on forward. So my decision tonight, it's not based on just the fact, it's what's good for our community. Right now, we need to move forward. We need to just get this done and over with and get back to municipal politics, however fun that may be.
Thanks, Counselor Owens. Counselors Shaba?
Thank you very much, Acting Mayor. I agree with all the counselors that said we should put this behind us. The sooner the better. As we all know, the mayor has apologized. And I guess what's left on the table is the question of the shape of reprimand, or how the reprimand would be, I guess, implemented. So at that last meeting, when the educational part of it, when the IC was around, I wasn't too clear that that question of suspension of remuneration is part of, could be, could be really lumped together as being a reprimand. And of course, I asked for more information about the case and the case law that she referenced. She sent that to me, and believe me, that is, that was not very clear. What was actually clear was that a conflict of interest provisions of the council can also precede the municipal, the MCI, or so. So I'm not too clear So I'm not too clear that, uh, the suspension of renumeration, uh, will be, uh, an appropriate reprimand. So I'm not too clear on that, and I don't think the IC, uh, really, I don't think she went there at that meeting, correct me if I'm wrong. So, um, I'm not too sure, uh, what we can do, but I, I think, uh, suggestion would be a verbal re- reprimand, uh, maybe a censure or something like that, and so that we can move on as everyone is really now eager to move on. But I'm not too sure that, uh, suspension of renumeration, uh, would be really considered, uh, uh, a reprimand, a reprimand that the IC, uh, indicated or suggested in her report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Shaba. Councilor White?
Yeah, so I agree with my fellow council members here. We are on the cusp of a really strong new beginning with the hire of, uh, the new interim CEO, Dawn Stedholm. Um, and even though Mr. Kylie insists on perpetuating this issue by sending threatening emails to all of council, which included in part the sentence, "I urge you to accept the IT recommendations as stated to avoid further action." It's my belief that the rest of council wishes to right the ship and make the best interest of the municipality the top priority. So at this time, I have to rescind my support of taking a portion of his renumeration under duress, uh, because of the veiled threats of litigation against this council, which would not serve any taxpayer. So that's my stand on this, and I hope we can all move forward now as a team.
Okay, I'm just going to stick to this as well. I do not think that a reprimand anywhere comes close to a penalty that, that suits, uh, actions that has such ramifications for the town. But I too am not willing to spend ratepayers' money on a legal battle. Now, having said that, and it was a tough decision for me to come to the table tonight and say, "I'm going to settle for a reprimand." That was not an easy decision. But on the other hand, I personally do not like being threatened. And I look at this threat as not an idle threat, but an attack on the democratic process. Mayor Kylie knew full well that this would come back to council and that it would be council's decision as elected officials to determine what the penalty, if there was going to be a penalty, would be. For the mayor of a town to threaten councillors with legal action in an, in an effort to try and get a lesser penalty is undemocratic, and that really bothers me. I am also severely bothered by some of the statements towards the end of the letter, which he basically smears every member of council and accuses us unjustly of breaking the code. And, and to make it worse, he never once called me aside and said, "Excuse me, Councilor Owens, but I think you should be careful, you're breaking the code." This has come out of the blue, and it is not the sign of good leadership. I, uh, so I, I'm not, I, I can't sit here today and say that I have finished with that letter. Because again, it's the same problem, what is best for the ratepayers. But on the other hand, if there's no checks and balances, current behavior continues. And in this case, the checks and balances are filed into complaint with the Integrity Commission. And I am going to give that a great deal of thought because democracy is something that's very precious to me. And it's very precious to Canadians. And trying to influence that process is just so, so wrong. Thank you. Any further comments? Uh, so I take it the council would like, uh, okay, what, what I would like to propose at this point is that, um, we, we receive the Integrity Commissioner's report, uh, considering, consideration of suspension and renumeration, and that we, uh, return next meeting with a, uh, reprimand for approval. Yes, Councilor Owens?
We have to wait till next meeting, can we just get that done and over with?
We can do it right now if, if that's
Like, just get it done and over with, move on from this to, from this and just be done with it.
Okay, but we have to decide what it's going to say.
I, I agree.
Accept his apology.
I also agree.
Accept the apology and move on.
So I currently had, I have Patrick Adams as the mover and Stacy White as the seconder. Uh, so we'll keep the first part to receive, and then Councilor Adams, is there the secondary language you'd like to provide?
No, I just want this done with, uh, threats just need to come to an end. So let's get some real leadership going and move forward.
So the motion is currently moved by Patrick Adams, seconded by Stacy White. Be it resolved that the discussion on the Integrity Commissioner Report, Pat Kylie, consideration of suspension of renumeration be received.
I don't know if the question, if the chair
All right, can you repeat that? I, I missed part of how you, what it was, what it said.
So right now, it's just the recommended that was listed to receive. So be it resolved that the discussion on Integrity Commissioner Report, Pat Kylie, consideration of suspension of renumeration be received.
And then there's no mention of reprimand in there.
Yep, and that's it. The reprimand is, uh, the public has to listen that we've been threatened and it's over.
It's over.
That's a count. Okay, that's fine. Uh, all in favor? opposed, carried and done. Now, item 12.2 is, uh, good, is a request from Central School. It says crane request, and when I first read that, I thought they wanted to, us to supply them with a crane to lift something, but I was dead wrong on that one.
So thank you, Acting Mayor Owens, for your to council speak to this. I received correspondence from, uh, Central School for a request to place a crane at any, well, Town Hall specifically, possibly the complex. Um, it was just during that time where I wasn't sure if it was for staff or for council, so I wanted to just bring it to council and let you decide if you would like to have one, um, and at which facilities, and if you'd like it indoor or outdoor. Because I think that changes what, uh, they might be able to give us. So right now, I only have it listed to be received, but if somebody wishes to present a further motion to say to have one at Town Hall or the complex, we can include that and go from there.
Councilor White?
I would definitely support, um, if staff believes there's space available, that, um, something like this could be safely displayed. We have to get feedback from staff before any decisions were made. Does staff believe that there's a safe position?
I think there could be outside. I'm not sure if our front lobby of Town Hall would inside, but we could put language in the motion that just says to be decided by staff or, what did you say there?
Subject to staff approval.
Subject to staff.
Okay, yep, definitely, I would support it.
Uh, Director Sackrider, did you have something you wanted to add there?
Only to mention that if there was interest in having one displayed at the complex, we would be able to find space.
Just for those that don't know, this is a project being put on by art students at the school to bring hope and joy to a, to a COVID world on a local level. And I think their teachers and, uh, the students should be commended for this little gesture because right now, I, I believe little gestures mean a lot to a lot of people. So thank you, Central School teachers.
Councilor White, I have a draft motion, uh, be it resolved that the crane request letter from Central School be received and that staff be directed to request cranes for Town Hall and the Joe Mavernat Community Complex, subject to staff approval for a location.
Yes, that's perfect.
Do I have a seconder for that?
Eugene?
Do you want me to read it again, Acting Mayor?
Uh, no, I think we, any councillors want it read again? All in favor? Opposed, carried. Item 2.3 correspondence from District School Board Ontario Northeast.
Thank you, Acting Mayor Owens, this is correspondence received that was addressed to mayor and council for, um, some policy updates. So it's just presented to you to receive and circulate the information to the public.
Any questions? All in favor?
Do I read it?
Oh, yes.
Moved by Eugene Ivanov, seconded by Patrick Adams. Be it resolved that the correspondence from District School Board Ontario Northeast be received.
Okay, all in favor? Carried. And the next one, uh, is actually an important one, uh, for the, uh, working of the town. Um, the town relies on, uh, residents a great deal to volunteer and serve on our committees. And apparently, we have some openings, uh, so we're putting out a call for applications. And I'll, uh, let our clerk, Carrie, uh, read the information.
Thank you, Acting Mayor Owens. I wanted to include this in today's council agenda just to help put the word out and for all of us to comment if we have any comments. Um, so we've been working a lot with our committees to try and streamline, um, agendas and minutes and posting to our website and just making sure that everyone's just looking towards the same goals. And so with that, we found that there are some vacancies available. We are updating all of our terms of references and just wanted to put it out there to everybody to let your neighbors know that we're looking for people. And if you're interested, feel free to apply, as well as you can call or email me for any additional questions. And we do have a committee page on our website with, um, each committee's terms of references, previous agendas and minutes, and so you can get a lot of information from there as well.
Okay, you want to read the, uh, resolution?
Moved by Stacy White, seconded by Lad Shaba. Be it resolved that the call for applications committee members ad be received.
All in favor? Carried. Item 12.5, COVID-19 Recovery Funding Correspondence from the Ministry of the Municipal Affairs and Housing. And we heard a little bit about this earlier in the meeting.
So we received a letter that outlines we are receiving funds as part of the COVID-19 recovering, recovery funding. Um, the letter is required to be signed by the treasurer. So I did get that completed by Mr. Gorman before his departure, and it has been sent to the appropriate channels. So I believe we should see our first installment on or before May 1st and the second on or before November 1st.
Any questions?
So moved, moved by Casey Owens, seconded by Patrick Adams. Be it resolved that the correspondence from Minister Steve Clark regarding COVID-19 recovery funding dated March 4th, 2021 be received.
All in favor? Opposed, carried. Now have a, uh, resolution to move into closed session?
Be resolved that, oh, sorry, moved by Stacy White, seconded by Lad Shaba. Be it resolved that council move into a closed session pursuant to section 239.2 to discuss one land disposition matter, one matter pertaining to a position, plan, procedure, criteria, or instructions to be applied to any negotiations carried on behalf of the municipality, and one matter involving personal matters and an identifiable individual.
All in favor? And there's nothing to report from the in-camera meeting, portion of the meeting. I lost page four. Uh, okay, we have a confirmation bylaw?
Moved by Patrick Adams, seconded by Stacy White. Be it resolved that the following bylaw be read at first, second, and third time numbered, passed, signed by the mayor and the clerk, and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number 21-021 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held March 9th, 2021.
All in favor? Opposed, carried. And then we have a motion for adjournment?
Moved by Casey Owens, seconded by Lad Shaba. Be it resolved that council adjourn the March 9th, 2021 regular meeting of council.
All in favor? Carried.